Kennedy.
Here.
Longo.
Here.
Robel.
Here.
Schumelberg, present, Mayor Kimball.
Yes.
Mayor Monchi going private?
Councilmember Cosrally.
Yeah.
Kennedy.
Yes.
Longo.
Yes.
Robel.
Yes.
Schumelberg.
Yes.
Mayor Kimball.
Yeah.
Kennedy.
Here.
Longo.
Here.
Councilmember Nittori, who not be attending this evening, Councilmember Robel.
Here.
Schumelberg, present, Mayor Kimball.
Here. Would you like to? Boy Scouts, to the flag. The United States of America, the Republic of which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. So, John, notice?
Notice that this meeting has been given to the citizens of public in accordance with the open public meetings law.
New presentation tonight to generally Ivan Gonzalez for obtaining the rank of Eagle Scout, let me give it to Councilmember Cosrally. Come on up, Jeffs. Edina Haddi.
So, uh, can you say anything? Jeremy is a, is a member of troop three fifty, which I happen to be a member of back in the day. So, it's only fitting that I gave him a resolution congratulating him on getting Eagle Scout. So, I'm gonna read this real quick, and I know he has a very good speech plan to give everyone, so. Whereas Jeremy Ivan Gonzalez completed his Eagle Scout Board of Review and obtained the rank of Eagle Scout, and on November fourteenth, two thousand fifteen, he was presented with the coveted Eagle Scout Award at the Eagle Court of Honor. Whereas to earn the rank of Eagle Scout, a Boy Scout must advance through five ranks, earn twenty-one merit badges, and in addition to other requirements, he must complete a service project that benefits a nonprofit organization within the community. Now therefore be resolved that the mayor, municipal council of the township of Belleville recognized Jeremy Ivan Gonzalez for his diligence, determination, and dedication in pursuing the highest honor awarded, awarded by the Boy Scouts of America, and congratulate him on attaining the rank of Eagle Scout. Benny, about and I have had the opportunity to watch Jeremy go through the ranks, so God bless you, Jeremy. Great job. We also need to recognize your mom and dad, all their support, because without them, this doesn't happen.
First off, I'd like to thank Councilman Cosrally, Mayor Kimball, and the rest of the town council. I am truly honored to receive this. My Eagle project consisted of building six pollinated boxes to house bees, which are so important to the environment. They were donated to the Essex County Environmental Center. It was very important to me to represent my troop and my town for this project. As an Eagle Scout, I feel it is very important to live up to higher standards. I will continue to help my troop throughout the years to do things in our great community. Finally, I would say I would like to thank my parents and family for pushing me and helping me achieve this feat. Thank you, everyone.
And it wasn't easy for him, because I know his father's the, the scout master, and it was extra tough on him, right?
Yeah, right. But he was so true that my nephew did. He got it all.
Yes. Yes, I know. He worked it right though.
Yeah, he just came up.
He got it before me.
Yeah. Congratulations.
Congratulations.
Yeah.
Good job.
And thank you for the scout leaders who spent so much time, uh, teaching our, our, our boys and girls the values that's associated with scouting and, uh, please keep up the good work. Thank you. Good job, Rob.
And all those cookies say so.
Two minutes.
None of these time there.
Communications? Do you want to report a manager?
Oh, okay, I think we reported one.
Uh, councilmembers, Mr. Ma, uh, Mr. Mayor, members of the public, just would like to report at this time they began resurfacing of the Graylock Parkway. Uh, as of yesterday, they saw cut the center island on Graylock Parkway, uh, from Union Avenue down to Washington. Uh, this afternoon, when I passed, they began the installation of the Belgium block curbing. Uh, I'm hoping that by next week, they'll have that project paved. New street poles will be placed, uh, for street signs, uh, which will be historically correct to tie into the streetscape project. The, uh, lighting project on Washington Avenue is still not complete yet. We have four poles left for the public service to complete the installation on. There have been some delays, uh, waiting for a response from representatives from public service to give an answer on that. Uh, Mr. Mayor, if I can, I have Chief Cruz over here. He'd like to discuss, uh, the recent fire occurrences and do a little small presentation if, if you can.
Sure.
Thank you. Chief?
Mayor, members of the council, members of the public, um, I think it's important at this particular time to, um, to speak a little bit about the Silver Lake Firehouse situation, what that means to the residents over there, what that means to the fire department as we continue to try to meet the needs of the, of the community. Just to clarify a few points, perhaps, maybe to, uh, alleviate some of frustrations that are out there, maybe even to, to come up with some solutions as we continue to explore this, this, uh, this problem. Uh, I'll start out by saying I've been in contact with over the years, that we're going on a platoon already for two and a half years now that we've, uh, just, the doors have been closed over there. But yeah, I hear it every day in the firehouse. I hear it every day from other people in the community, I hear it from members of the council. And, uh, I can say that myself, every other member of the council, manager, are all committed to, to improving this condition that we're in. The condition is that the doors are closed on, on Silver Lake Firehouse. The decisions that, you know, are going into trying to find an appropriate solution to this continue to become complic, complicated, or not complicated, but complex, as we look at things, or I, I have chosen to look at things, uh, from a, from a broader perspective. And that is how the fire service operates within this town. Looking at it from those, from that position, I see a lot of needs with our facilities, and that's not a secret, that's been out there for many years. The problem with when we look at, uh, what do we do with fire stations? Do we renovate them? Do we build new ones? This town has that new fire station going on forty years now. The ones that we have on in Silver Lake and Washington Avenue are approaching a hundred years old. The fire service in a hundred years ago was much different than it is today. The needs of those buildings are significantly different than they are today. And that is a fact, and that adds to the complex nature of finding an appropriate solution to, in this particular case, the Silver Lake Firehouse, because that's what is in the most need to, to remediate right now. As we try to look at this from a responsible position, and that's what I'm supposed to be doing as your fire chief, um, I can't look at this for the next fifteen minutes or two years. If we're gonna make an investment in, in a, in a fire station, whether it's through renovation or a new building, whatever the case may be, we have to look to fifty years, maybe more. The town has changed somewhat in those hundred years since those original buildings were built, and we do need to continue to keep that in mind as we approach making a decision for this. And I think the most important thing for everyone to know is that there is a commitment to resolve this problem, and it's something that I continue to push on on behalf of the citizens of the town, because it is my responsibility to make sure that the fire protection system in this town is what it should be. Now, of course, my partners, the seven people that sit up on this, on this day, is, are also committed to it, and they have expressed that to my, to me personally many times. So, let me, let me give you a little bit of an overview of how I'm looking at some of the things that are, or have now become part of the Silver Lake Firehouse problem, as I look at the fire station conditions on a whole. As I said, most of our buildings were built quite fine ago, and that leaves us in a position where we are grossly underfaciling to meet the needs that we are, are going today. And that comes in terms of storage of vehicles, storage of personnel, storage of equipment. You know, our, our firehouses, as we all know, operate three hundred sixty-five days a year forever. There's no days off, there's no shutdowns, there's no time offs. So, these facilities need, the demands on these facilities and our firefighters are significant. So, we have to make sure that we are addressing them properly, and we're dealing with them responsibly. Some of the things that we're looking at right now that we need right now, we need additional fifteen hundred to two thousand square feet of administrative office space. We are cramming people into, into offices that shouldn't be crammed into spaces. It doesn't allow for efficiency, it doesn't allow for people to, to take care of the business that they need to take care of, because there's too many things going on. We need additional two thousand to twenty-five hundred square feet for apparatus, storage, reserve fire apparatus, EMS, and other equipment. What we have today in terms of equipment and apparatus is gross, is greatly different than what we had a hundred years ago, or even fifty years ago. Certainly at the top of the list is our current response to the Silver Lake Fire District. And as we look at all of these things, we continue to look at evaluating what things have changed since these original sites, these original firehouses were put in place, any new development that took place, and how does that affect what we're doing with these firehouses? We need upgrades in our fire headquarters. Currently, we're doing an upgrade on our, our, our restrooms at fire headquarters, and believe me when I say it, it's chaos. It's, it's, it's madness right now. We need upgrades to the Washington Avenue Station in addition to the Silver Lake Station. And when we look at this, you know, we're talking two, two point five to four million dollars in a fair reasonable estimate to get all of this stuff done. So, let's talk about Silver Lake Fire Station. We have a structure that's close to a hundred years old, that if, even if we renovated it, as we had thought about more than two years ago, that still what we have is a clean, coated paint on a hundred-year-old building that is undersized and not necessarily capable of delivering the needs of our firefighters, or maybe not even to the community. As such, we look at this project in a very narrow perspective when we evaluate as a solution to the overall fire department needs going forward. During this process, I've been working very closely with Kevin Esposito, and we're looking for options, we're looking for solutions, we're looking for better alternatives to putting bad mo, putting good money that we need desperately into a project that may not deliver the outcome that we, that we ultimately want. And as we go through these ideas, it takes time for things to develop, for things to be vetted out, and I know that adds to the frustration of many people. Another factor that goes into perhaps considering the Franklin Street Station as a viable solution to the Silver Lake Fire Problem is Franklin Street itself. A hundred years ago, when Franklin Street was probably a dirt road, a little bit before my time, but I'm sure there weren't as many vehicles traversing Franklin Street as they are now. It's probably one of the busiest streets in, in the district. I have a study that was done almost ten years ago by our town engineer identifying a lot of those hazards. Those hazards were brought to, uh, to the surface by our firefighters who go in and out of there every day, and the condition that compromises the in, going in and out of that building with fire apparatus is certainly a lot more difficult than it was fifteen, twenty, thirty, forty, a hundred years ago, just due to the volume of traffic. And what that does is puts our firefighters at risk, it puts the, the citizens of the neighborhood at risk. Do we want to consider that? I mean, we need to consider that as part of all of the factors that go into finding the appropriate solution. Past two weeks, we had two very serious fires in that area, and I'm sure everyone is concerned, you know, of what may happen, and nobody thinks more like that than I do. You know, it's my responsibility to make sure that the fire protection system is, is appropriate for what we need. It's, it's important for me to make sure that my firefighters that are going out there are protected. So, on those nights with no apparatus in the Silver Lake Station, it's my opinion that this condition by itself was not the primary cause for the significant damage that both of those buildings incurred during those fires. Important to the officers who were on the scene when they first arrived, those fires were well advanced when they got there. Now, that could be attributed to any number of factors, or any combination of factors that would lead back to, uh, to that condition when they got there. Now, unfortunately, these investigators, our investigators are still evaluating the information and the evidence from these fires, so I can't responsibly talk about any of that stuff tonight, but, you know, things, there's many things that cause a fire to be a large fire when fire climates get there. You know, the number one concern, and I know there's some, some of our guys are back here, and, and the number one concern, and we all kind of raise our hands too, is, is protecting life safety, and it's important that we, we, we let the people of that community at this particular time, uh, that we, we are still capable of providing good service, excellent service to that district. This morning, I've been, I, since this morning, I've been going over a number of, of, of our reports, and I looked at our response times for that district for twenty fourteen and twenty fifteen, and I've identified thirteen building fires in that district since January one of twenty fourteen. Eleven of those fires had our first arriving unit on the scene in four minutes or less. The other two are five minutes or less. Now, let me tell you about our industry standard that we try to meet. The industry standard is a ninety percent, um, score in fewer than four minutes for the first arriving unit, and a full response in fewer than eight minutes. And that's townwide. That's townwide. So, as we concluded by the statistics I just provided you, we're meeting the industry standard in this section of town eighty-five percent of the time for our first arriving units. Now, we can argue for five percent, but I think it's not a perfect score, but I don't think anyone's gonna be saying it's unreasonable, or it's, it's, it's not effective. And additionally, in reviewing all these reports, we have not seen any serious civilian injuries at any of these fires. Now for the good news. Another rating agency that we use to identify, uh, the adequacy of our fire protection is the ISO, Insurance Services Office, and their recommendation is, and they provide the highest rating to those communities where a fully equipped engine company is located within one and a half miles of, I guess, any particular residence or occupancy or business, imagine that, and a latter company within two and a half miles. With Station Three closed, we do not meet those recommendations in most areas of Silver Lake, uh, Silver Lake District. I couldn't give you the percentage, but I, I know for a fact that we do not, and that's a significant issue that we're trying to address, and we're gonna try to resolve that. I'm not gonna apologize for something that, it's not totally my, my fault, but again, we all should be apologizing for the, anyone who feels frustrated by this process, but you know what? That's life. Life is frustrating. I'm as frustrated as anyone else, and the only advantage I have is I have the opportunity to work on a daily basis to resolve this problem.
Yeah.
And maybe that takes some of that frustration out of my, my mind, because I'm trying to find a solution. So, the frustration and the anger and anybody else doesn't make the process go any faster. Like I say, we're looking at options. I think we have some good options that are, that are beginning to, to become viable, to become a possibility that we're really gonna do these things, and I hope that we can continue to work together to resolve this issue, dissatisfaction with everyone. Thank you, I appreciate it.
Thank you, Chief.
Thank you, sir. Do you wanna take questions now, or whatever you, however you wanna?
Yeah, I, I, we'll take it from the council. Does anybody have any questions for Chief?
I have loads of questions. I mean, you know, we're here tonight to, to see what we can do. I mean, what you said, Chief, was all well and good, but when are we gonna do this? We need this ASAP. This is a dangerous situation where we are. I mean, I live right next door to one. If it wouldn't went a different way, my two homes would've went too. We need to do it, we need to do it fast, and, and I don't see why we just can't refurbish the Silver Lake Firehouse. We supposedly have two hundred and sixty thousand dollars to refurbish it. Is it still there? Is the bond ordinance, Mr. Esposito?
Of course, it's still there.
It's still there, no money was taken out.
The only way would be touches if you organize it to be appropriated for another use, and that's never been requested, so.
Now I hear that maybe you wanna do something on Mill Street, a one, a point seven miles. I mean, you have one fire station here and one here, makes no sense to me, and I'm, I'm not a fireman. Uh, I really think we should get the Silver Lake Firehouse done as soon as possible, and if not, then do another building, or whatever you guys are talking about, because I'm not involved, I don't, because you're saying you're having meetings and negotiations, I, I don't know what you're doing. We have to put it then still in Silver Lake, and it needs to be done. I mean, we have people here that lost their homes.
Ray, I don't disagree, it should be in Silver Lake, and I.
Say that again?
I don't disagree with you that it should be in Silver Lake District, I agree.
Okay, and we have a row full of people here. I mean, this was devastating. I mean, in two weeks, and then a few months ago, it happened too. Our homes are all almost detached. One's gonna do the whole, the whole town. We need to do something. We cannot, two years, we've been waiting, two years. We need to do it now.
Kevin. You know, you know the firehouse, we've been in it, it's a complete rattle. I mean, if you wanna take the two hundred and fifty thousand, if you do it, then let's you do it, but you're not gonna find a fire engine that'll fit in it.
Well, we have one up now, it's gotta move, isn't it?
Wow.
There's no fire, can that fit in there?
Do it?
Fire truck number three fits. Of course.
There at least one truck in.
One truck goes there, we're, we're firing.
Well, let's look into refurbishing it.
That's what I said.
And we could do something with the, the other way. You know, the other project from Hoplin and LaRoche, we could move somewhere else in town, try to build a new firehouse there.
Right, put a recreation center.
Well, that's not the, really, that's not gonna be the chief's decision, it's gonna be the council's.
No, council.
Council's decision if you wanna do it that way, and, uh.
We'll have to talk about it, talk about it soon.
We'd have to have a meeting, what we need to do. We'll talk about it soon, yeah.
If we're gonna do it that way, we do it that way.
And I never wanted the firehouse on Williams Street closed. Why didn't close that?
I know. I didn't mean the landmark.
Excuse me? There was, there was some discussion at one point about, you know, the architects going in and the bond ordinance and all that kind of stuff. Was there ever, um, any sort of timeline of, because at the very least, refurbishing that building could be considered an emergency move at this point. You know, what kind of timeframe would we be looking at in order to get that building into service? Do we have any sort of timeline as well?
I don't know, I would say six months to a year, perhaps.
And also keeping in mind that we, that we, our firefighters.
Twelve months would be probably reasonable.
Yeah, it's probably a year.
Well, if you say. I'm sorry.
Yeah, that's, that's basically, I mean, you know, from, you know, how soon could we get started? What would need to be done to get that building serviceable for the safety of the guys that are gonna be working there, but also for the effectiveness in that area?
The consensus of the, of the people that walk through that building is it's a complete renovation, which means the roof is, roof has to be repaired, and then everything below the roof has to be gutted and, and rebuilt. So, you need new utilities and plumbing, electrical, and everything, top of the box.
The amount that we bonded for, do we have an estimate that that would be enough to do that project?
Yeah, yes. As we found out.
Do we know if the amount that we bonded for was, or had we come up with that number to begin with, you know?
Well, it was a budget. I think it was kind of a Band-Aid approach, quickly get this done as, as quick as possible, and I think as we continued to look at the, the depth of this problem, it was gonna be that's why we're here today, actually.
We have the actual bids, so we don't have an exact one.
I'm not certain it's gonna be enough, I don't know.
I have something to say.
That was the budget.
I, I have something.
Oh.
Today, I, I, today I walked outside my. Today I walked outside my home, and there were two NORC firefighters and a big NORC fire injured, and what I don't understand is we have water hydrants that, they're probably from the seventeen hundreds, and because we live in Silver Lake, we get NORC water. So, we need to do something with these, these fire hydrants, and I guess you would be the one, Chief, to get to NORC.
I applaud whatever you want to do.
Now, to get to NORC, to see.
NORC water, I know we've tried to approach it many times, they're not real responsive, they're not real responsive to NORC, so.
No, I do understand that, but I think with, it's a fire, and, and the fire guys told me that, um, they should be inspected every four to five months. I, I don't think they've ever been inspected.
Nope.
And since we get the NORC water, our hydrants are antiquated, we need new ones. So, we need to talk to NORC, if you could write a letter, that would be wonderful, to get and check all the fire hydrants in our area. We have two, you know, these, these fires were, were horrible. I, I witnessed, I've never witnessed what I witnessed. I, you know, I used to go to the fire. I mean, it was really unbelievable, and I have to commend these firefighters. They were marvelous, marvelous, and I thank you. And, um, I, I've got a better insight on what the fire department has done, when I saw them with all the gear and trying to get up there, we tried to.
All the stuff the fire department did.
It was amazing, and that's all I have to say.
Let me poll the council first. Do you wanna fix up this Silver Lake Firehouse? Let's, let's get that answered first.
That's a good idea.
Chief, do we have, uh, if, if we open the firehouse tomorrow, do we have the manpower to, to staff it?
Well, that would be another discussion, actually. Of course, we have a lot of things to talk about.
No, I mean, I'm sure, I'm sure we have the fire, fire is coming in.
We would have to make some changes to make it.
They're shaking their hands over here, so they must.
We do, but we would have, we would have to make some changes to.
Well, Ray came up for the, I mean, the mayor.
Do you, do you have to accept that fire yet?
I think we have no choice.
Yes, I say yes.
I, I agree with you. Okay, now, can we have two hundred and sixty-five thousand? Can we, can we start immediately with that two hundred and sixty-five thousand, and then bond for anything else we need in the future?
Yeah, that's good.
Well, let's.
But we've been in it, it needs a lot of work, I mean.
Yeah, well, I, I think if.
New bathrooms, new kitchens, new floors.
Chief Cruz will come up with a figure of two point five to four million. Chief, could we just come up with a figure of 2.5 to 4 million?
That's not all of those.
I mean. We should bond for it.
I saw it, yes, but not 4.5.
Well, I think, you know, doing the main hits, I think that's up to where we need to be or any, it's, it's important.
Yeah, so, I think by the next council meeting, we'll put a bond ordinance together for 4 million to fix up all this firehouse.
Let me do some, some work on those numbers so these guys can get that right. Those are, those are working back in the envelope, kind of construction numbers.
If we spend 2.5, we can reappropriate.
I mean, just my first opinion. I don't want to go through Silver Lake this week and then Washington, the day is closed down because it's, you know, it's, it's in not working condition. So if we got an architect that gave us prices on all of them, let's do, let's do it. It's, it's the council responsibility to make sure these.
If I get a vote, I vote yes.
These buildings are functioning. Get us going.
Yeah, I just have one more question. Is there another place in that area?
Thank you.
That would make sense to just build a new building. It might be cheaper to just build a new building from something.
I know originally when we, when we first came on this, Kevin and I looked through the maps and we really didn't find anything appropriate at that time. I don't know what's available today, but I know two years ago, we did not find anything that was appropriate, but that doesn't mean.
I think it's going to take longer to do that.
You're right.
I don't know.
It's going to take longer to do that.
I can't let you talk yet.
I believe that it has to be in that vicinity because that is the furthest point, right? That would be much the furthest.
Well, they're talking about path marks. You got to buy the land. They're not going to donate it to the town. I think it's up for sale for close to $8 million right now.
Not the whole site. You don't need the whole site.
They're not going to sell you a piece bit. They cut up their property.
They might be general security. Don't know. There's an area they don't use that.
Whatever you want for the final number.
We'll try to work out some, some real numbers. Yeah, we can do that.
Thanks, Chief.
Hi, Ron, and Chief. I think you did a good job.
Communications.
A request received, excuse me, from the Bell South Coast Association for permission to conduct tag days on December 12th, 13th, and 15th, 12th, and 13th by local.
Make a motion to approve it.
Second.
Quick call.
Councilmember Cosmali?
Yes.
Kennedy?
Yes.
Longo?
Yes.
Nottari? I'm sorry, Rovell?
Yes.
Strumelberg?
Yes.
Mayor Kimball?
Yes.
The request received from the Bell South Coast Association for permission to use the friendly house during January, February, March of 2016.
Make a motion.
Make a motion to pass it.
Second, quick call.
Councilmember Cosarelli?
Yes.
Kennedy?
Yes.
Longo?
Yes.
Rovell?
Yes.
Strumelberg?
Yes.
Mayor Kimball? See, resolution received in the Township of Bullfield authorizing the purchase of a decommissioned fire apparatus for parts from the Township of Bellwood authorizing its resale when the apparatus will be of further, no further use to the Township of Bullfield.
Make a motion to approve it.
Second.
Tom, do we have to, do we have to go out on bids or? Was there a problem with those selling a fire apparatus at one time?
I'm not aware of that. Tom, I need to tell you something. Selling this fire apparatus to Bullfield, we have.
And would you sell it, I mean, sell it to Bullfield? How do we know what the value is?
It's going to sue into a state. Isn't that what the resolution says?
It's not that brass, right? Well, how, how do we know what the value is? If we're getting the right value from Bullfield?
I don't see a problem with it.
I believe that was an S.T.A. when we got the, the, uh, not the manufacturer, but the, the, I think that's a purpose.
What they're going to do is they're going to take equipment we're not using, they're going to use it, and then they're going to sell it they can't use.
Okay.
That's my understanding of their resolution.
Councilmember Cosarelli?
Yes.
Kennedy?
Yes.
Longo?
Yes.
Rovell?
Yes.
Strumelberg?
Yes.
Mayor Kimball?
Yes.
The letter received in the Crown and Essex Department of Economic Development Training and Appointments Division 1000 of Community Development stated the Township of Bellwood awarded through the Community Development Block Grant for a win $250,000 for reconstruction of each street and $136,000 for the reconstruction of 20 streets.
Ordinance introduction.
Ordinance number one for introduction, a group and ordinance amending chapter 21 Property Maintenance Code, section 2, amending property.
Make a motion introduction.
Second, quick call.
Councilmember Cosarelli?
Yes.
Kennedy?
Yes.
Longo?
Yes.
Rovell?
Yes.
Strumelberg?
Yes.
Mayor Kimball?
Ordinance is public hearing.
Ordinance number one for public hearing and ordinance for giving the sale of tobacco and nicotine delivery products to persons under the age of 21.
I make a motion open it for public hearing.
Second, quick call.
Councilmember Cosarelli?
Yes.
Kennedy?
Yes.
Longo?
Yes.
Rovell?
Yes.
Strumelberg?
Yes.
Mayor Kimball?
Make a motion close public hearing.
Second, quick call.
Councilmember Cosarelli?
Yes.
Kennedy?
Yes.
Longo?
Yes.
Rovell?
Yes.
Strumelberg?
Yes.
Mayor Kimball?
Yes.
Ordinance number one for second of final reading and ordinance for giving the sale of tobacco, nicotine, and delivery products to persons under the age of 21.
Make a move for final adoption.
Second.
Quick call.
Councilmember Cosarelli?
Yes.
Kennedy?
Yes.
Longo?
Yes.
Rovell?
Yes.
Strumelberg?
Yes.
Mayor Kimball?
Yes.
Resolution adopted. Ordinance number, ordinance number two for public hearing and ordinance to license establishments that sell smoking devices in the Township of Bellwood.
Make a motion move for public hearing.
Second, quick call.
Councilmember Cosarelli?
Yes.
Kennedy?
Yes.
Longo?
Yes.
Rovell?
Yes.
Strumelberg?
Yes.
Mayor Kimball?
Yes.
Make a motion close public hearing and move for final adoption.
Second, quick call.
Councilmember Cosarelli?
Yes.
Kennedy?
Yes.
Longo?
Yes.
Rovell?
Yes.
Strumelberg?
Yes.
Mayor Kimball?
Yes.
The ordinance is adopted. Ordinance number three for public hearing and ordinance to amend and ordinance entitled and ordinance to control and regulate the Fire Department of the Township of Bellwood, Essex County, New Jersey, to control and regulate the appointment and demotion of officers and members.
Make a motion open it for public hearing.
Second, quick call.
Councilmember Cosarelli?
Yes.
Kennedy?
Yes.
Longo?
Yes.
Rovell?
Yes.
Yes, Mayor Kimball?
Yes.
Mr. Maddley?
Jeff Maddley, 56 Walnut. Can you expand on this? What and why? How does this alter existing ordinance?
We're making a fire lieutenant on a request of the fire chief.
How many lieutenants are there presently?
Eight.
Eight?
Yeah, you want the nine.
How many captains are there? Or is that not possible to ask?
We have more fire captains.
How many houses do we have?
You took away a mechanic, right, Chief? You lost a mechanic.
Final question. How, how many firefighters do we have?
I don't know. So 79, my heart?
No, we're at 69.
69?
69 firefighters.
With everybody. I took officers and firefighters.
69 is with everyone?
Correct.
EMTs? Home and Gila.
I'm sorry?
No.
Whole, whole thing.
It just, it, it sounds as though there's some questions to whether or not we can staff. And, and I, I understand that, you know, that's a combination of brass and firefighters, but we should be certainly sure that we're in the proper proportion at the limited public expense that we have to be sure that these houses are manned fully around the clock, as you say, Captain, or, or, I'm sorry, Chief, even on holidays, Christmas included. So.
Well, we, we probably are able to staff, but then when you figure in vacations and sick time, that, that drops it below what we would more like.
And you specifically word regulation and appointment of, of demotion and officers and members? Is that different from before? How was, how was that carried out before?
No, it's the same.
Same just language? Okay.
Thank you. Make a motion close public hearing, move for final adoption.
Second, quick call.
Councilmember Cosarelli?
Yes.
Kennedy?
Yes.
Longo?
Yes.
Rovell?
Yes.
Strumelberg?
Yes.
Mayor Kimball?
Yes.
The ordinance is adopted. Ordinance number four for public hearing and ordinance for amendment by General Ordinances of the Township of Bellwood, chapter 6, 6 dash 4.2 Alcohol Beverage Control Hours Exile on Sundays.
Make a motion move for public hearing.
Second, quick call.
Councilmember Cosarelli?
Yes.
Kennedy?
Yes.
Longo?
Yes.
Rovell?
Yes.
Strumelberg?
Yes.
Mayor Kimball?
Yes.
Make a motion close public hearing, move for final adoption.
Second. I was, I was up there. You mind? Just, what, what's going to change?
This is going to change the hours. Instead of opening at 12 o'clock, they'll be opening up at 11 o'clock. Of course, nothing in Clifton changed their hours to 11 o'clock.
Thank you.
Make a motion close public hearing, move for final adoption.
Second, quick call.
Councilmember Cosarelli?
Yes.
Kennedy?
Yes.
Longo?
Yes.
Rovell?
Yes.
Strumelberg?
Yes.
Mayor Kimball?
Yes.
The resolution, the ordinance is approved. Ordinance number five for public hearing and ordinance will amend and ordinance creating permanent positions and adopt a weekly classification and compensation plan.
Make a motion open it for public hearing.
Second, quick call.
Councilmember Cosarelli?
Yes.
Kennedy?
Yes.
Longo?
Yes.
Rovell?
Yes.
Strumelberg?
Yes.
Mayor Kimball?
Yes.
Once again, anything specific? What's changing?
It's a 2% raise across the board, I believe, Ken, right?
Yes, Mayor.
2% raise.
As a result of these most recent negotiations?
Yes.
Okay.
Make a motion close public hearing, move for final adoption.
Second, quick call.
Councilmember Cosarelli?
Yes.
Kennedy?
Yes.
Longo?
Yes.
Rovell?
Yes.
Strumelberg?
Yes.
Mayor Kimball?
Yes.
The ordinance is adopted. Ordinance number six for public hearing and ordinance will amend ordinance number 3333 creating personnel positions and adopting classification and compensation plans.
Make a motion open it for public hearing.
Second.
This is the same thing. It's a 2% raise. Thank you. Right, Ken?
Correct, Mayor, yes. Just with the blue collar, so.
Make a motion. Make a motion close public hearing, move for final adoption.
Second, quick call.
Councilmember Cosarelli?
Yes.
Kennedy?
Yes.
Longo?
Yes.
Rovell?
Yes.
Strumelberg?
Yes.
Mayor Kimball?
Yes.
Ordinance is adopted. Ordinance number seven for public hearing and ordinance to amend and revise General Ordinances of the Township of Bellwood, chapter 8 dash 6A Four Way Stop Intersections Designated.
Make a motion move for public hearing.
Second, quick call.
Councilmember Cosarelli?
Yes.
Kennedy?
Yes.
Longo?
Yes.
Rovell?
Yes.
Strumelberg?
Yes.
Mayor Kimball?
Yes.
Make a motion close public hearing, move for final adoption.
Second, quick call.
Councilmember Cosarelli?
Yes.
Kennedy?
Yes.
Longo?
Yes.
Rovell?
Yes.
Strumelberg?
Yes.
Mayor Kimball?
Yes.
The ordinance is adopted. Ordinance number eight for public hearing and ordinance to amend or revise General Ordinances of the Township of Bellwood, chapter 8 dash 16 Handicap Parking Spaces.
Make a motion open it for public hearing.
Second, quick call.
Councilmember Cosarelli?
Yes.
Kennedy?
Yes.
Longo?
Yes.
Rovell?
Yes.
Strumelberg?
Yes.
Mayor Kimball?
Yes.
Make a motion close public hearing, move for final adoption.
Second, quick call.
Councilmember Cosarelli?
Yes.
Kennedy?
Yes.
Longo?
Yes.
Rovell?
Yes.
Strumelberg?
Yes.
Mayor Kimball?
Yes.
Ordinance is adopted. Ordinance number nine for public hearing and ordinance to amend or revise General Ordinances of the Township of Bellwood creating chapter 3 dash 39B Smoke Free School Zones.
Make a motion open it for public hearing.
Second, quick call.
Councilmember Cosarelli?
Yes.
Kennedy?
Yes.
Longo?[1416.63] Rovell?
Yes.
Strumelberg?
Yes.
Mayor Kimball?
What's the distance you're talking about here?
What's what? The distance?
The distance.
We're, we're in a school zone, it's a thousand feet.
The question I have is, how do you enforce something like this in a densely overbuilt power like us? What if you have a resident that lives two houses away from the school and he's sitting on his porch? And I'm not a smoker, I don't like smoking. What if the guy is sitting on his front porch and smoking a cigarette in front of his own house and he's within a thousand foot zone? How do you enforce something like that?
You can't, well, I think it probably, when classes or other student activities are in session. So, we're limited, we're limited that they can't smoke within those, on public property, I think now. I think it's just on public property, yeah.
It doesn't say public property.
Yeah. If you're saying a thousand feet, this gets taken off.
Can't tell the.
I mean, you know what, we'd have an ordinance for public property specific. It's maybe a little bit too far.
No, I, I understand, but for example, that's not supposed to have a license, but smoking, while I don't like it, is a right.
No.
It's not illegal.
Can we still make a motion, table account? All right, make a motion, table.
Second.
Councilmember Coserelli?
Yes.
Kennedy?
Yes.
Longo?
Yes.
Rovell?
Yes.
Strumelberg?
Yes.
Mayor Kimball?
Make a motion, open up public participation?
Second.
Councilmember Coserelli?
Yes.
Kennedy?
Yes.
Longo?
Yes.
Rovell?
Yes.
Mayor Kimball?
Now, this is just to talk about whatever.
Yeah, whatever.
Is on my mind, right?
Exactly, almost whatever, yeah.
Okay. Diane Rothwell, four zero three Cortlandt Street. First of all, I would like to request that, I've been to a couple of these town hall meetings and I would like us to pay a little bit more respect and have a little bit more of a formal introduction when we do the flag salute. Especially in light of what our country is going through today. My son, my dad, both served in the military and I really think and feel that, you know what? Instead of a wham bam, thank you ma'am, flag salute and sit down and go address the business, let's do our due diligence and show respect for what our flag represents, this country, this state, this county, and this town.
What do you suggest?
Take a little more time.
Take a little bit more time. And. Also, I would like to ask what this council's position is in regards to the Cortlandt Street redevelopment project introduced to the planning board in November. I implore that you not approve this project of declaring it an area in need of redevelopment for the prospect of constructing the one hundred and fifty-eight apartments, but instead hold the property owner responsible for maintaining the buildings and property as to the township's building and safety, public safety codes, as you would hold every other individual and commercial property owner in this town. By just allowing the proposal of the area in need of redevelopment is interfering in the quality of life for the residents on Cortlandt Street, triggering anxiety, uneasiness, and stress, when in reality, according to Google, the three potential properties approximately measure six hundred and sixty feet by two hundred and forty feet, and obviously not adequate to accommodate such an elaborate development, unless the developer is looking to secure the additional residences on the west side of Cortlandt Street adjacent to the project, which would directly affect and disturb the eight current residences in which eleven families presently live. Not to mention the displacement of the two families renting on that property, Mr. Pizentez's family at three nineteen and Mr. Schmidt's family at four seventeen Cortlandt Street, and the businesses operating at the aforementioned properties because of the possible apartment construction. Are the businesses, residents, and families in danger of losing their homes because of this proposal? That the developer plans to acquire the eight additional properties and at what cost? After twenty-eight years of living in my home, raising my four children and the other families on Cortlandt Street, maintaining our homes and property to support families in coexisting with the present residential and commercial community, that we are expect to live for our lives to be disrupted and to be evicted also? Whether we can afford to relocate or not? Is this accurate and the intentions for the redevelopment? The council needs to resist temptation from these developers, whose only interest is their financial gain with irresponsible development, and concentrate on the homeowner's interests, who are the voters, the supporters, and who bear the cost of this town through the property taxes, or as taxpayers at election time, should we consider to seek representatives who have, who have our best interests at heart? We also need to acknowledge that our town's foreclosure rate of nineteen percent is ten percent higher than the national rate. Our town has five hundred and eighty-plus foreclosures, including short sales, bank-owned properties, auctions, and pre-foreclosures, and that Belville's home values are below the state average. Not to mention the presenting, the present overcrowding of our struggling school system and the impact on our town services, including the police and fire departments, public works, and town hall employees. So, in essence, more domicile development will only further burden the taxpayers with higher taxes. And I've been told that with such development, we'll hopefully bring in New York City employees who seek residencies outside the metropolitan area. And I beg to differ, because these people want the conveniences of an easy commute between home, work, and recreation, by hopping on a subway or train just outside their door that takes them just about anywhere, including the entertainment of shows, movies, restaurants, shopping, and not to mention great schools within the immediate New York City area and to attract that target market. The prices of sales and rentals in Belville would have to be considerably lower than what is offered in New York City and the local towns of Hudson and Bergen Counties. I've also been questioned why I'm against redevelopment progress, and let me say, I'm not. As long as it's responsible and not at the expense of the town and its people. So, I ask, when this comes to your, your dais and it comes ahead of you, please do not allow this to continue and stop it, because you're dealing with lives, not only the homes on the west side of Cortlandt Street, but there are homes on the east side also. We have a, we have an issue and struggle with parking. We have businesses on that side of the street, and this type of development is going to impact us immensely, and especially the eight, nine, ten, ten families that live within that area. So, please reconsider and not allow this to continue. I don't know whose interest and what interest is driving this forward, but squash it and stop it, because your jobs are here only for a certain amount of time, but this is going to impact so many other lives much longer.
Thank you.
You're up. You got three minutes, because you spoke too long.
Oh, okay, I'll try. Well, someday I'll surprise you, I'll come and I won't have anything negative to say. How am I? It's not today. Okay, I'm back to the painting of our street carpenter, dehug, I'm sorry, dehug. One carpenter tears, and I'm talking about that. Sefeli came June twenty-third and he started our project. Had it been up to me, they would have never been there. I moved in there nineteen sixty. It's a, it was a concrete truck. That would have lasted, I don't know how many years more, but now we had that black asphalt. However, like I say, they started June twenty-third and they finished around the end of August. I think they thought all the, all the trucks and everything were gone, so I assume they thought they were finished. However, we're still hanging around. They put in these little IDs, little chalk marks, but they never put the lines in. We need to instruct the tenants and the homeowners on that street how to park within a certain space. You know the problem we've had, I've been here arguing for, for years. We're losing space again, because there's no definite lines, especially in the circles where there never were any lines. I think Jose and Mickey, they, they painted them themselves when they got tired. But if you could tell Sefeli to come on back and finish the job, I would be most appreciative. Plus, a lot of our neighbors would be.
So, they just marked it out, did they, they never painted it?
They, they put a little, every so often, they put a little marker about this big.
So, it has to be painted.
But they didn't put the lines in.
Yeah, they didn't put the lines in. They just marked it out.
And you know what? They got, okay, we have terrible drivers in our neighborhood. And, and there again, we gained twenty-three spots.
Right.
Because of their graciousness, giving us seven foot of the hospital. We made use of it, twenty-three new spots, amazing. But now they're, like I say, they're lousy drivers. Thank you.
Do you want some? Uh, excuse me, council, the, um, I'd like to make some comments on Chief Caruso's presentation. He stated, we all know, two and a half years, the firehouse been closed, and he's trying, trying solutions. Firefighting is a very important matter. Two and a half years is a long time. We should have had solutions. And there've been many questions under quarter million dollars that was appropriated for that. I and others have asked, what's going on? Are the plants developed, what happened? It's, two and a half years, nothing. Fires are serious matters. So, this is, you know, complacency on the part of the council and in all due respects to the chief. Two and a half years to develop solution to this important problem is totally unacceptable, especially when the money has been appropriated. And so now, and, and that mayor, you know, right off the cuff, the chief said, well, all his facilities need two and a half to four million, and then right away, oh, next meeting, we'll pass a bond before the, again, before the dentists or anything.
If all his, if all his plants need upgrading and fixing up, I think we should, yes.
Well, you know, it, it's just becoming absolutely embarrassing, you know, ten, over ten years with the friendly house, you know, I don't understand, I don't understand it. Others, I've built things in, in a matter of months, and here we go, we just do talking and spending our money and wasting our money.
And what we spend, and you're gonna stand up and holler that we spent it?
When you spend it irresponsibly, you're darn right. And the, um, in regards to this, also, Chief Caruso mentioned some things which I agree with, not only do I agree with it, it's something I and others are saying. One of the things, the new development increases our needs, which we agree with. That's why we're finding projects such as the Cortlandt project, we thought that this overdevelopment, you know, exceeding our density by two, three, four times is unacceptable, as the chief said, it isn't one of the things that increases the services required. He also said, so a hundred years Franklin Street has changed as the busiest street in town. Another thing, goes to density. The more you build, the more our streets clog, and you can't widen Franklin Street. You can't, look at the problem we have on Belville Avenue. The past two years, it's horrendous. Now, it's not only the morning and afternoon rush hour, it's all day long. You can't traverse that or Jerralman Street. I mean, bumper to bumper traffic, just calling up, a couple of days ago, on the Union Avenue and Belville Avenue, sat there for three lights. Guys trying to make a left turn, coming down, they can't make it, the light turned green three times. Density, density, density. This is why we reduced the density over the years from twenty-five to twelve. But now we're widening with all these areas that need redevelopment. Now, with all these things, once again, Belville is at the tail end of things. I've been telling you that, in my opinion, a couple of years, all these places that are building these rental places, they're building these rentals and there's a need for them, because people can't get mortgages. They don't wanna live in rental places, they're in a rental. However, I've been vindicated, in the business section, January twentieth, two thousand and fifteen, a survey of bankers and all, the majority either strongly agree to somewhat agree that the multifamily real estate market is now a bubble. A month later, another business article, the recession was supposed to usher in a return to the dense urban and walkable. Instead, the opposite has happened. And now, interest rates come up, once the banks start loaning, these renters are gonna run for the American dream, and once they have kids, they want that one-family home. So, if we're gonna get on the ground floor, I mean, at the end of the boom of rental properties, we're gonna be left with another bunch of vacant homes, another auto home place, another Betsy Ross apartment up the street here, and, and it's a disgrace to let that happen to Belville.
Right, we should have got in initially.
The what?
We should have jumped in first.
No, you know, Phil, over the.
We should have against any development.
Yes, yes. In fact, back in eighty-seven, one of my campaign flags was, so, maintain our suburban character. And if you look back at all the years.
Let me name the towns to you, Vinnie. You got Moncler, you got Nutley, you got Broomfield, you got East Harrison, you got Carney. All those towns are developed. Not Belville, we're sitting here.
Mr. Mayor.
Maybe we'll get the horse and buggy back here.
Two weeks ago on Sunday, I sat with a friend of mine, he was a Realtor, Moncler. They now have exceeded the ability of the people to pay the taxes. That development has increased the taxes astronomically.
They're still building.
Right? Well, and again, they're gonna be at the bottom of the bubble, and this has happened all the time. Look at nineteen eighty-nine, the overbuilding.
We should look at seventeen acres on Route twenty-one for the past twenty-five years. That's, that's vacant. We should look at that every day we go by there.
Exactly, Mr. Mayor, and guess what?
What?
That is a very bad, who committed? We're not talking hypotheticals now. Lowe's wanted to win there, Walmart, Home Depot.
Yeah, well, why didn't they take it?
Because now it's cleaned up.
Why didn't they take it?
Because it wasn't cleaned up at the time.
I'm not knocking on anything, I don't yet.
Well, when they didn't go here, they went right over Carney, and look what happened to Walmart and Carney. On the contaminated place, they cleaned it up, go look at it now. It was the only thing there at Walmart. Within a couple of years, they got a whole, they got a whole strip of commercial, they got a whole strip of commercial stores, they got another convenience store there, and they developed it like credit.
You're just gonna send to me arguments.
Not an argument for the work. Now, this area down there, this is just a partial of Cortlandt Street from D P W to Holm Street. These are all the active businesses down there, dozens and dozens of businesses. This is not an area needing redevelopment. Those trucks parking down there, this is the gentleman who holds a truck, he parked twenty-five trucks down there. He's paying up almost six thousand dollars a year in rent there. The consultant the planning board hired to address this need said it's a vacant property. All his statements were incorrect, that he said down there. When he questioned, he couldn't answer some of the things there. So, we're asking you, the, one of the things he said, there's a declining demand for commercial industry. Again, I don't wanna bore you with newspaper articles, but FedEx is putting up places for delivery. There's a big demand, because more people are shopping online. Distribution and wholesaling places and, and facilities for small contractors is a demand. Look what they did in Nutley. An old site over there, if you see the, it's a small, I think, four or six units or something, immediately rented out the contractors, storage facilities, a commercial place on Main, on River Road, a little ways down from Dunkin' Donuts. They immediately rented them, right? So, this is what we need. We do not need this, more of this development. Now, this developer came before you on January thirteenth. He asked you to designate ninety-one Terry Street as an area to redevelop. He also told you that the bank would not loan him the money unless you gave him a pilot. He stated, you're collecting fifty-two thousand dollars in taxes from that site, but the council's only getting twenty-four thousand, the rest goes to Board of Ed and the county. He then went on to say, he wants to build a hundred and fifty-eight units, which was not possible on the site there, so right from the end, the end of that meeting, several of us talked, and we knew what his motive was. He wanted to grab them properties and there with your help, the one family and two-family residents adjacent to his property. He said he was gonna put up market-rate units of rentals, and he wanted you to give him a thirty-year pilot at a hundred thousand dollars a year. Divide that by a hundred and fifty-eight units, that's six hundred and thirty-two dollars a unit. On my undersized one-family lot, I'm paying eighty-eight hundred. There are people paying thirteen thousand dollars for one or two-family lot, and he wants you to allow him to build, and each unit would only give the town six hundred and thirty-two dollars for thirty years. I got another article that, there's a guy up there that was against tax abatement. You, Mayor Kimball, in a newspaper article, he said, I don't wanna give tax abatement, I believe it's the Washington everyone, over thirty years, we're gonna lose millions of dollars. That was your statement, and I applauded you for that, and I agree with you. So, we gotta stop these pilots, we gotta stop tax abatements. Not me, Matthew Boxer, the state controller, former state controller, I brought it to you many times, did several reports on redevelopment. It hasn't worked in New Jersey. It's worked for the developers in his reports, not for the citizens of, not only the town, his reports that it hurts the citizens in adjoining town.
You wanna finish up, Vinnie?
So, yes, finish up, and I hope you guys finish up, you know, and just did things out of the reject. And one more thing to the chair, Mayor, I wanna address Councilman Coserelli. Councilwoman Coserelli, I just suggest to you that you recuse yourself from any discussion and any votes on this matter, because your cousin is the attorney for the developer. So, you have a conflict of interest, so, I just, you know, just sit there and relax, make some.
God bless you.
Jeff Mattely, fifty-six Walnut. Through the chair, chief, what was the response time at those two fires? We, we know that, don't we?
He said that.
Less than five minutes.
Less than five minutes for these last two?
The other, these, the two most recent?
Yes.
Specifically, I don't know, but it's, it's, it's probably less than four minutes.
Well, I'm coming at seven, I'm the first. Well, I'm coming at seven twenty-one. The other day was seven twenty-five, and within eight, within eight minutes, the rest of the equipment was there.
Yeah, with the first one.
The first one, the second was similar, I, I don't know the second.
Everything was, everything was, for that district over the last two years was less than four minutes or less, except for two, which was five minutes or less. So, it wasn't more than five minutes if it was, I don't.
And I, I Googled it, and they said, that's an acceptable, that's time for firefighters.
Okay, we're, we're looking to maximize the ability, for everybody's safety, fire and personnel, human life. There's a lot of hydrants that I know that I possibly, I'm thinking about operating, just how many hydrants in towns are not capable of supporting, because I have friends that are firefighters, and on my own block on Walnut, they had to travel the full length of the block to get water pressure at the end of the block some years ago, because the N-hydrant does not work. And this is a, you know, a fundamental responsibility, that we're talking about possibly bonding money to do two million, two point five to four million. These arbitrary numbers are unacceptable. Please do not come before the public with anything that is not detailed and targeted and expense-related can be shown to the.
That's how we will get an architect, is determine how much it would cost us to rebuild six of these buildings.
Again, and, and I'm concerned in view of the size of the opening at the, at the, at the house in Silver Lake now, that we're thinking about renovating, that it can't accommodate the equipment properly or meet ADA requirements, which are definitely necessary under renovation. I don't wanna lose the building, it's an historic building. I think that the town can put it to use in a variety of ways. I like the idea of a new house with two pieces of equipment, but like people say, it's gotta happen. You can't, can't go on forever just waiting in limbo. And that, that strategic location has been depicted at Mill Street and Franklin Avenue enables the department to get to the, to the east end of town quickly, to the, to the west end of town quickly, as well as the south end of town. It's a good strategic location. Chief, I, I respect your, your challenges that you presented about apparatus getting out of the departments, but Franklin Avenue and the width of it is no challenge to New York City or where we have main avenues all over these suburban communities. And if proper lighting and things have to be put in by the county council's request to slow down the traffic in that area, which, you know, needs to be a speed zone to begin with, cause traffic to back up when the lights come on and get out of your way, there's no greater danger than to the public if you can't get out of there, and I don't see why two lanes in each direction shouldn't accommodate that adequately. Moving forward, what exactly does the town want to discontinue garbage collection for the district? Don't we hold a town-wide garbage collection, and the school districts are historically a part of that? And I understand that we already, I have an industrial business, we don't pick up commercial and industrial garbage, but there's lots of tax-exempt organizations that we pick up for in, in Belville. Why now?
I believe what we're doing is changing their budget, they might have more budget.
So, remove it from their budget, have it come out of their budget, which to us, which to us as taxpayers is the same wall.
It's the same thing, same thing. Jeff, but you know, they become more responsible. Jeff, they don't like to enforce recycling. That's, that's.
Because they're not paying for it, so they don't.
Well, when you say enforce recycling, that's your organization, I understand enforcement.
We just drag it off containers there, and they're not using it, so...
Enforce it.
Well...
That's the point.
If you're paying for it, like your temperature in your house, if you're responsible for it, you're gonna take consideration of it.
Well, I've got you, I've got you. And I was at the tree lighting ceremony, was incidentally, was wonderful, it was a great event, and it showed the cooperation between the township and the district maintenance workers in getting, pulling that together and making it a fun, easy access, you know, great, great, great event for the town. I applaud you for it. We're looking for more of this cooperation. There's going to be bonding issues of huge magnitude coming up at the board. I understand the board has reached out to the council and was looking for a member. We would like to see that. We would like to see, as taxpayers, cooperation and just like the bonding that you're considering, very carefully targeted with factual information to support the immediate needs versus the wish stuff that, you know, are really laid out so that everybody can understand and get behind. Because short of that, you know it's gonna fail. It's gonna fail. So, you better be real sharp with your pencils, and we, I hope an employee, please, have council representative on that building committee when we look at the condition, so that we're all in this together, including community people. Moving along, the developer that's considering, I'd like to tell you upfront, I'm in communication with the Finkelstein brothers. There is interest in that property. It's not dormant, it's not laying fallow. Councilman Kennedy, you, through the Chair, Councilman Kennedy, you were very heavy-handed in the way that you came into the last planning board meeting and pushed through the agenda to use eminent domain on that property.
Right.
Imminent domain, can you explain to me how that meets the criteria in any way, shape, or form for the use of eminent domain?
Because every time the Finkelstings make a deal with somebody, say the price is twenty million, then when it comes time to close the deal, it goes to twenty-five million. They did it with Lowe's, they did it with the other guy, every time they had that property sold, they added two or three million dollars on the closing, and the people backed out. Now, they want hard money. They want three or four million dollars, hard money upfront, and if the person who's going in front of the zoning board or the planning board doesn't get what they're proposing, Finkelstings get to keep the money. It's been like that for the last twenty years.
Hard money, what do you mean?
Non-refundable.
Non-refundable.
Okay, so in order to give contract to the seller...
So, now they want four million dollars upfront, hard money. So, if they go in front of the zoning or planning board, whichever, whoever wants to put something there, and they don't get it, Finkelstings keeps the three or four million dollars.
Well, that's interesting, but I'd like to know what does the council, what makes you perceive that you have some right to develop private property that the taxes are paid for, that is now clean, ready to develop?
First of all, it's not used.
It's not used.
The taxes are paid.
It could be more taxes paid.
You want it left, left back?
Well, but what right is that of us to determine what they do with their property?
It's been vacant for thirty years?
I'm gonna say thirty, I don't know.
It's been being cleaned for like twelve years. My business is directly across the street.
Yeah, I'm saying vacant.
Vacant.
Yeah, that's one criteria means.
It hasn't been vacant since they tore the building down, which is shortly after they ended using it.
Was there anybody in it?
Yeah, they were using, it was tired distribution.
Yeah, Finkelstein.
Yeah. Yeah, it was certainly used until they asked for permission to tear it down. So, the point is that it meets in no way the criteria of eminent domain. There's been contracts, viable contracts on that property where people were ready, they let it ready, they had a two-year contract with Lowe's, they weren't seeking any tax abatements or pilot programs. They were willing to fund the development one-hundred percent on their wallet, giving us full access to the tax ratables when they came in, which incidentally, not involving any residential, would be completely tax money that we could use, it would cost us nothing. It would increase no population, requiring no increased personnel, no kids in school. It would provide this tax funding that we desperately need to offset the expensive residential.
Jeff, you want to finish up, please?
And then Lowe's wanted twenty-eight million, the Finkelstings raised Lowe's to twenty-eight million, and Lowe's said adios.
Well, then the Finkelstings will continue to pay, excuse me, Mr. Esposito, what is that, about a third of a million or more in taxes right now?
It's a little under that number.
A little under a third? A million a year, every three years. You're talking about a million dollars right now as their property is being funded through their tax dollars. I can't imagine why they would want to sit on this indefinitely, and they do have offers, they do have interested parties. So, for us to consider utilizing taxpayer money in terms of lost revenue for god knows how long for development that we don't need down there on a sensitive flood-prone, you know, there's heavy-duty infrastructure down there.
I know.
All right, not a place to utilize redevelopment or eminent domain. Leave it to the market, let them develop it commercially.
That's your opinion.
It is, thank you. Cortland Redevelopment, I'd like to conclude on this because this is industrial...
You may have fifteen minutes.
This is very, it's not fifteen minutes, come on, Mayor, it's barely five. But Cortland Redevelopment...
You've got a slow clock.
This is industrial property that is more likely well-polluted. Everything on the east side of that railroad easement is industrial from one end of the town to the other. It's flood-prone there as well. Why would we consider using eminent domain, which looks like it's gonna be an aspect of redevelopment?
I don't think eminent domain was ever mentioned on that problem.
No, but you've got a heavy-handed Realtor going from homeowners and property owners, telling them it's a done deal, the property's been sold, and we all know it's definitely contingency.
It's not been sold, right?
Well, that's what they're telling, the Realtor's telling people that it's sold, it's a done deal, people have left the area. Pardon me?
Who is the Realtor that was doing that?
I'll get you the name. It's going around.
What are you trying to say right now?
I don't have it in front of me, I'll get it to you. Tomorrow, okay?
I thought you knew.
Oh, no, we didn't get it. But the fact of the matter is threatening people that it's already finished, and they've gotta move, and they better sell.
I want to hear that.
Cash incentives to move. Well, you can get, we can get eyewitnesses or ear witnesses, and to stipulize, it is a flood zone. The cost of cleaning industrial property to residential standards is astronomical. It's also why, under redevelopment and tax abatements, it deliberately cuts out the schools. There's no intention for residences on former industrial properties. That's why the schools get no taxes. So, please don't consider that.
Okay, Jeff, that's it, thank you.
You're welcome, thank you.
Yeah, it's Jerry Del Gershio, Acro Street. My question is, oh, actually, the Chair to the Fire Chief, I believe we have agreements with Nutley and Bloomfield for assistance.
Just mutual aid, I think, throughout the state, isn't it? You got a county that have mutual aid.
Okay, now, my question is this, and this is concerning the Silverlake properties. I believe the council is really committing itself tonight to finally get this firehouse fixed. In the meantime, if they've committed themselves, is there a way that when a fire call comes through in that area, because our two firehouses are completely on the other side of town, can the firehouse in Bloomfield on what, I think it's Watchon Avenue, respond? Because they would respond in half the time, either of these other two firehouses.
That's not true.
They went first?
Yeah, they went there.
I'm talking about initially when the call comes through, not after they need help.
Unless they got a call from some other source, we would have to call them.
That's what I'm saying. Can we call them immediately in the event a fire takes place in that area?
We have that option, yes.
And that's my suggestion. Thank you.
Phyllis Franch Antoni, you're talking about the Board of Education paying for their own garbage pickup? What line item is available out of our budget for the municipal house?
It's just the garbage contract.
I understand that, but you want them to pay for their own garbage?
It'll reduce that line item on ours, the garbage contract, it'll reduce that.
It'll reduce it on the municipal end?
Right, right.
For sure.
Huh? Sure.
Because it's said before, not like that necessarily happened. And I want to know what the status is of school one property.
I haven't been in touch with anybody, Kevin, have you? They have a study on their way. They'll change and plan.
Who?
The planning board.
The planning board?
You got the planning board?
I moved up to the owner of the property. Have you been down to look at that property?
Best owner, routine basis.
You've created an area of redevelopment, you need a redevelopment. It is disgusting. They don't clean it up.
There's been a building on that longer than it has been on Finkelstein's.
Well, go with this, you're coming in from other towns, it's right there, you see it, it's disgusting. There's weeds all over the place, it's a mess. I mean, to do with somebody else's property, the homeowners, they get summons, and you should clean it up, and not leave it like that till they decide what they're gonna do. And with the firehouse, Silverlake does need a new firehouse, and we've been saying to refurbish the other one. Why not contact Pathmark? They may give you a piece of that property to build right there. I mean, that lot that they have the...
I think that's an option you will look at, Kevin.
Pathmark is not the owner of the site. They've since vacated the stores and bankruptured them, not able to discuss negotiations, but there have been discussions.
So, maybe what they need that, or they're more apt to give you...
They don't own that, they leased the site.
Or maybe you can deal with the owner, and maybe they can do something for the rest, you know? Yeah.
Or even though they're...
Because that's really a shame with that firehouse, all I gotta say, shame on you.
Hi, my name is Patricia, I live on Heckel Street. I just have a problem with the nine-one-one system that we have on Saturday night. When I called nine-one-one, I got a Newark lady on the phone, she told me, hang up the phone and dial Belvo. Now, our house is on fire, how am I supposed to be looking up numbers to dial Belvo Fire Department? I told nine-one-one, they were supposed to, when you give your address, they're supposed to direct you in the right direction, supposed to connect you to the town that you need. It doesn't matter if I have a cell phone.
I guess we should look at how you called on your cell phone, did you call on a cell?
Called on my cell phone, because I gave them, I gave them my address, I said sixty-one Heckel Street was on fire. She said, ma'am, hang up your phone and dial your town. This is Newark.
And that's when I called on the other one.
How, I mean, first of all, what if it was a senior citizen had a heart attack? She's gonna look up, let me get the phone book, let me find, nobody now knows their numbers anymore. Everybody was going crazy.
Unfortunately, that's the way it works now.
First of all, she should have, you know, she should have transferred me to somebody.
Yeah, but see, that's the way it works with the cell system. You have people on the parkway getting in a car accident, and they call nine-one-one, and it can hit Bloomfield, Belvo.
I completely understand that, but if I'm, if I'm giving you my address, and I'm saying, Belvo, please, I said, please connect me to Belvo, and she said, ma'am, hang up the phone, I won't tell you again. Come on.
I think that was a very ineffective operator, that's all.
That's what that was.
Unfortunately, we...
Simply ask what town.
It was by a few people.
Usually, they ask you why...
You know why we did that, too.
But it's not, I do have an alarm system, but I was across the street trying to get people out of homes, you know, I mean, what, do I have to run back into my house to press the alarm?
Exactly.
It was just like, it was ridiculous. You know, that was...
That should, like, should...
That's what I'm saying, it's like, first of all, she should have said...
She should have connected you with...
Somebody.
They should have connected you to Belvo.
Exactly, they should have automatically connected you to the...
Well, I couldn't believe what I was hearing.
Waste of time, not always enough time.
They hang up the phone and dial Belvo.
That's stop time, too.
Yeah, I was actually in my yard, because I own the house that was, one of the houses that was burnt up. It was about ten-twenty when I was banging on my tenant's door to get them out of the house, when I realized it wasn't my house was on fire, it was the neighbor's next door. So, we went around the corner and got them out of their houses. So, by that time, the police had came, but it was...
Ten-twenty.
About ten-twenty, because I was working in my yard. But she told me, she said, because by the time I got from my yard over to there, she was telling me to call my town.
I don't know what happened specifically with that particular call, but I think with the nine-one-one system, it's kind of an automatic system, so it kind of knows who you're calling from most of the time, and if the system gets overloaded, it kicks it out to different places, and whatever protocols that operator had to deal with that overflow call, I mean, that's, I don't know, but it could have been that they got five calls or ten calls.
That was the first, that was the first one right there.
What is that solid, five calls? I mean, by that time, you'd have heard...
I don't know, I'm just throwing it out there, it could be a possibility that there was a number of calls that were made at the same time to nine-one-one, and I don't know how many operators we have at the...
Did they identify the town that they...
They said they were Newark?
Excuse me?
They said they were Newark?
She said, she said, you're calling Newark, you need to hang up and dial Belvo. I said, I don't know what their number is.
Okay.
That's exactly what she said to me. I was floored.
Police headquarters, four-five-zero-three-three-three, right? It's all threes?
Yes.
Yeah, but they said three-three-three-four, Steve.
I'm gonna just, I don't even know my own phone number.
Three-three-three-four?
Yeah, three-three-three-four.
Either way. Just saying that, we're gonna do it first. I have less than... Is occasion nine-one-one does that same thing?
That's what I'm gonna be dialing, not nine-one-one.
Find out what's going on with that.
I just got a program into my phone.
Yeah, exactly. Anyone else, Mrs. Lee?
Yes, me.
Go ahead.
I'm having so much problem with my house in over there and stuff, and...
Miss, can you give me your name and address, please?
Lucina Coppola, twenty-four Columbus Avenue, Belvo. I cannot raise the rent anymore. I have my South Walk so bad, senior go by over there, and they're tripping on, they complaining, we're gonna sue you if you kind of fall away there. I had to go out and get the credit cards from Home Depot, get the stairs, I cannot afford to do the South Walk. I'm asked, this town is meeting, it's like a fine solution. It's getting worse and worse and worse and worse. When I came from Italy, Belvo was the best. Now, it's gone. What I'm waiting for to be sued, I can't afford.
What is she called, a sidewalk?
Sidewalks are the overs, responsibility.
Unfortunately... Mrs. Coppola's been here previously, and I request I had Mr. Harris do an investigation on her street.
Sir, my taxes gone up and up and up. You wanna make a copy of this?
That's besides the point. Your sidewalks are the owner's responsibility.
Who's gonna give me the money? I did not win in the lottery.
If we fix your sidewalk, we have to fix every other residence in town.
Sir, when my second...
Miss, I'm not gonna argue with you, that's the way it is. That's the way it is. Like, we, the town cannot fix your sidewalk.
Okay, let me ask you another question, with all your respect, how come all the corner on the South Walk, they didn't fix?
If there's a grid done for the street that includes sidewalks and curbs, then it's fixed.
That was the county doing the handicap stuff.
So, it's a minute they fix the corner, and then we get...
That was the county.
It's county, by law, the American...
The handicap is accessible.
Yeah, they have to make it handicap accessible.
I don't think so, this is...
Thank you, Walmart.
You're welcome. Thank you, dear.
Richard Kavanaugh, president of the Fire Officers Association.
Richard, I, sorry, but I can't hear you. I know who you are.
He said it, he said it.
We're here today, members of my union asked us to get up and speak. And we have some issues involving the minimum for staffing when it comes to firefighting. We're not here to embarrass anybody or blame anybody. We're here to actually help resolve it. And we're available to anyone here and we'd like to sit down and get this issue resolved. But, you know, as I'm listening to the meeting, everyone seems interested in response time. And there's another issue here. Our manpower, our minimum used to be 12. Five years ago, it was knocked down to 11. Okay? And the reason we had a lot of retirements, we were short men. All right? It kind of stopped the bleeding when it came to hiring overtime. Safer Grant, we were happy that we pushed for that and we got men back. So we're very appreciative to that fact. You know, that, that brought us back up. And, you know, when we need the new ladder truck, you got that for us. So we're happy about that. But as far as the manpower being at 11, you know, Silver Lake, everyone talks about the house and all that. When it's at 11, we lose an engine. Regardless of Silver Lake being open, the engine is now at headquarters, Engine 3. When we're at 11, that's not even staff, that sits there. And that doesn't just affect Silver Lake, it affects the whole town, because only two pieces of apparatus are going to every fire. It's a one-man difference. All right? Everyone, like I said, they keep bringing up response time. There's a thing called reflex time. And that's the time when you're on the scene, when you're putting water on a fire. Okay? By shutting an engine, that engine in the district starts their water suppression. An engine and a truck, it's a very coordinated effort between the two. When that engine is available and this beautiful new truck that we have now becomes an engine, because they're first to. It throws the whole function of firefighting off for us. And that's what I, I think people don't realize. That it's not just about being in that location, which is definitely important, because it does cut response time, but reflex time is really, is what's hampering us. So I'd like to sit down and see if we can, I like to have the minimum at 13. I mean, I know it involves money. But it used to be at 12, it's at 11, so maybe we can all get together and work on this issue.
Chief, how many did you say we had? All three of them?
Sixty-nine.
Sixty-nine? And how many ships are there?
Four. There's sixteen on a ship right now.
Excuse me?
Sixteen on a ship.
Sixteen on a ship.
And occasionally it falls below and we're at 11. And like I said, it's nearly what used to be.
Sixty on a ship. Maybe they have to fire.
You know, if there's any way we can all get together and try to figure this out, but it's been several years now. And, you know, we've had different individual meetings, so maybe more often we can get a meeting together somewhere and try to hash this out.
If I remember negotiations with the, we were always made it to a problem with the, the tie-off. There was too many men going on vacation at once and then some people would be booking off sick. And that brought it down.
Right. But now the manpower, that, that happens very rarely, but when it does happen, you know, it causes an end of the show.
What, what, what limit do we hire?
Anything could be, you know, it could be long-term illness, injuries.
Yeah, no, I know, but no. When it gets down to what limit?
Below the limit.
Eleven?
Below eleven.
As soon as it goes below 11?
It gets back up to eleven.
Like I said, that one piece of apparatus, everyone just keeps saying response time. That's part of the whole coordinated tactic. If they're not there flowing water and a truck behind it, you know, doing the roof work and, you know, without getting into all the details of it. When that truck becomes the first new engine, that's where the problems start for us. You know, and every officer, it's a tough spot to be in. You're looking around, there's more jobs to do than there is. So thanks for your time.
Well, I think we have to, we'll deal with the chief and have the chief have to deal with the manager and so on.
Do you have a motion, close public hearing?
Brian Salmon, president of NBA Local 29. Just to reiterate what the town chief Kavanaugh said, he's the boss in the street and he's gotta direct us to what we do. And it does really mess us up when the truck is the, becomes the engine company. Just a couple of examples, 60 Belmore Street, 15 Carpenter Terrace, 178 Union Avenue, 86 Belmont, and 6163 Heckel Street, those are our last five structure fires. The first three are still standing, being repaired and can be reoccupied. The last two now need to be demolished. And that's because our staffing was at 11. So the main objective here is to get our staffing back up to 12, have two engines, our truck company, in service at all times. Because we have enough men. Granted, there is some overtime, but this year has been drastically down since we got the Safer Grant. And the 12-man minimum is huge. And let alone if we get Silver Lake open as well. As firemen, we just want an opportunity to be successful and help the residents of this town. And that could really help. Thank you.
Mayor Kinkle, sometimes I have to.
He hear you.
I agree, John, the first one that was out here. Being you okay that the soccer association has permission to use the friendly house? Is it now open to the whole town for use and different organizations? Could we hold elections there instead of the firehouse? So that we have, we had the November election and the firehouse, that's supposed to be condemned.
I don't think it was okay by the Board of Elections.
I think it was.
You got approval?
Yeah, I think it was approved.
I would think it'd be okay if they got approval.
But we have no, we have no furniture.
So now the friendly house is going to be open to the town?
Like, Kev, why don't you tell us what's going on?
Answer your questions. The certificate of occupancy for the friendly house wasn't received in time to plan that building to be utilized for the November election. We now have a certificate of occupancy. We had it prior to November election. The building is available to be used. Yes.
Okay, and then like organizations can use it or the town can use it for recreation and stuff?
Certainly the town can use it for recreation and organizations would have to make a request and it would need to be approved by the.
Of course.
Okay. And as far as the firing, I would like to commend them on their duties that they did on the two fires in Silver Lake. They responded and the work that they did was unbelievable. And we do want the Silver Lake Firehouse to be reopened. Because I remember, Ray, you were in high school with me in the 50s, they always said, you came from Silver Lake? You came from the other side of the tracks. You were on the wrong side of the tracks. So I want to make sure that Silver Lake is now the right side of the tracks with our firehouse open, okay? Thank you.
Steve.
Steve, take your seat now, Scott.
Mr. Mayor, may I ask you a chief question? Chief, just for clarification, I'm not understanding. So we have 69 personnel.
Correct.
All combined. That's, but that's just firefighting personnel, not the.
That's including myself.
Right. That, that's, that's not like secretary, these are people who could fight fires and who are actual.
Okay.
The, I'm not sure I understand the issue that's being raised about the minimum. Can that minimum be raised without hiring additional personnel? Or do we need additional personnel to do what they're requesting? And if we do, how many more would we need?
The minimum is a daily function, so it's, every shift is assigned 16 personnel. Whoever shows up that day depending on whatever fireworks they, they take or don't take. It means you add a number between 16 and.
Oh, not the 11. All right, so you have 16 on a ship. If.
Right, you could go down to 11.
If six people, if six people can't come to work that day.
Then you ever raise someone back to bring it back up to 11. And that number, that number is 11 now. It was 12.
That's when the firehouse came out, I mean, the fire.
So it's a number that, that is, I guess, determined by the finances.
So what are, what, what are the men asking for? A change in the minimum number?
To raise the minimum from 11 to 12.
And does that require hiring additional personnel?
That would require hiring an additional person each time we get to that.
Each time it triggers.
Approximately how many firefighters will we have to hire in order to get?
No, not hire new people, hire on a daily basis. I mean, you could hire on Monday, Wednesday, and Friday, not Tuesday, Thursday, Saturday.
Do we need to hire additional personnel in order? New personnel?
That would be a different, a different discussion. The, the point that they were bringing up is the daily staffing. So this way you have enough people to ride out on the apparatus.
So they're not, they're not necessarily saying, we need you to hire us new guys.
No, we need to hire, we would need to do an additional overtime hire on a daily basis when required to go from 11 to 12.
How difficult is that? I mean, is it, is it enormously expensive to, to give that?
I can, I can get you those kinds of.
Give us the numbers.
Of course.
I'll tell you why, Mr. Mayor, you, we were, when we were talking about the crime stuff and in frustration, and I understand your frustration, you said, well, we might need to hire more cops. What do we have to do? You know what? Police and fire are probably the most important things that we have to deal with here, as we've seen this last week. So, you know, if we have to cut somewhere else or reduce something somewhere else in order to make sure that the firefighters and the police officers can show up and do, you know, it's a scary thing to hear, I don't know firefighting, but it's a scary thing to hear the scenario that a piece of equipment can't be used, you know, because of that and, you know, breathe. So, and I know it's an easy thing for me to say the way I'm, and I'm not, I know it's not an easy answer. I'm just saying, it sounds like there are solutions. Sounds like there are solutions being asked for. How could you even help these guys?
Well, I'm making a vacation.
The, the contract allows three firefighters, one officer at any given shift. So that would be four out of, four potentially at the 16.
That would bring us 16 down to 12 right away.
That would bring us, that would be.
And then I think they can take personal days whenever they want.
Personal days are, are, are restricted except for a 12-hour window.
And then if a sick time comes in?
Sick time is in there.
You, you really?
So you have potential. I mean, again, I can, I can kind of get you those where we are.
Yeah, what's the differential would be?
The numbers where we, the numbers where we were three or four years ago, when we were at 55, to where we are now at 69, are dramatically different. We've seen a decline in, in those occasions where we are at 11. But we still do get to that, Mayor, for sure.
Hire some volunteer.
Just procedurally, and you and I have talked about this a little bit, when, when an alarm comes in, we have X amount of trucks respond. I mean, before they can really start to fight the fire, how many, how, how many people have to be there?
We, we need at least four to get going by the, by the, by the ocean laws. Unless there's a light in jeopardy, like the immediate, and then, you know, we do what you need to do. So technically, it's four.
Four, four firefighters.
Two in, two out.
Probably two vehicles at least.
Basically, two companies need to be there in the, in close proximity of here.
Thank you.
Finish it?
Yeah, that, that's fine.
Ray, I just have one, one other thing.
Patricia Novarado, 98 Sanford Avenue. I'd like to talk about the firehouse situation. I've sat here tonight and I heard the chiefs talk about things. Gossip has it that there was a broken hydrant. Is that true? Chief Kavanaugh, which fire was this? It was not, there was no.
Which fire?
I think it was the first fire on Belmont.
First of all, I don't think they can be able to talk about that now, because it's probably under investigation.
Okay, well, let's hypothetically say the rumor is true. We talked about someone here that had a 9-1-1 call rerouted, for whatever reasons. We spoke about Newark not maintaining things. When are we gonna get Newark in? We've spoken about everything else here, but we haven't spoken that Newark should be fixing these things and doing something. Why are we waiting? I think this is about priorities. Priorities of $260,000 into a temporary building and it doesn't bring our firefighters the best. That's, that's a concern. I mean, I'd hate to see $260,000 thrown away and we're no better off. It's 15 years, I can remember 15 years at least, and we spoke about two and a half years for a solution. Why are we waiting? I think the Silver Lake citizens deserve better. And I think you should really consider doing the right thing by doing a new firehouse and having the best for our men so they can fight the fire. So I appeal that maybe you should really prioritize. I haven't seen any prioritizing at all in Silver Lake. We have a friendly house. Maybe that should have been the site for the new firehouse. We have to prioritize and do the right things in the right order. And we're just gonna throw money up your bed because of catastrophe. I think you really, the council mayor, please, think about what you're doing and the citizens of the Silver Lake, as everyone suggested, always felt second class. So let's bring them up and do the right thing by having something new and something that's state-of-the-art so we can maintain. Thank you.
Thank you. Do you have a motion, close public hearing?
My name is David Loano, through Oakley Freeway Avenue, also a firefighter. My issue again is two things that I'd like to just go over that people have mentioned, my chief and, you know, my union, and just myself as a resident. Getting the minimum up to 12 would keep three apparatus in service all of the time. Right now, if it's at 11, if we get down to 11, we only have one truck and one engine. So upping it to 12, after we have all these firefighters that got hired, and I was one of them that started to get hired, should have been able to bring it back up to that. There was a time when we had even less firefighters than this and we had a 12-man minimum, so I don't know why we can't get there again. The other thing I would like to speak to is response time a little bit. And basically with response time, a fire doubles in size every 60 seconds. So when you talk about if we're there in five minutes, it's gotten exponentially bigger than if we were there in two minutes. So getting that firehouse open or doing something to allow our guys back in there should be paramount to that area and to all the town. We're allowing people to go in there for voting, to store things in there, people are in that building. I don't know why we can't have something put on there, fix the roof and get us back in there and keep it open. Because we want to be there for the town just as much as the town wants us there.
Quick hold. Do you have a motion, close public hearing?
Second.
Quick hold.
Councilmember Cosarelli.
Yes.
Kennedy?
Yes.
Longo?
Yes.
Rovell?
Yes.
Strohber?
Yes.
Mayor Kimball?
Yes. Do you have a resolution?
Yeah, number two.
Excuse me?
The legislation is number two, that's all.
Number two, that's it?
Okay. Move the case.
Yes, it is.
Yeah, move it.
Councilmember Cosarelli.
Yes.
Kennedy?
Yes.
Kennedy?
Yes.
Member of Unico?
Unico.
A member of San Antonio?
A member of Unico.
It's not Unico.
Oh.
How about San Antonio?
It's not, it's not. Rovell?
Yes.
Strohber?
Yes.
Mayor Kimball?
Yes. Do you have a motion, move resolution number two?
Second.
Councilmember Cosarelli.
Yes.
Kennedy? Kennedy?
Yes. A member of Unico. A member of San Antonio.
A member of San Antonio should not vote on that.
A member of San Antonio's church or a member of.
It's not Unico.
Oh.
How about San Antonio?
It's not, it's not.
Don't worry about it.
It's not Unico.
Longo?
Yes.
Rovell?
Yes.
Strohber?
No.
Mayor Kimball?
Yes.
New business. You got to, you got to do the committee appoint and you look for a new judge.
Yeah.
There's no, resolutions or anything else on?
I believe that whether you did it last time, Mayor, was you appointed three individuals to the committee, we met several times. I know I met with the committee, of course, I'm not on the committee, but there were, I know Councilman Longo was a member, I believe Councilman Atari was, I'm not sure.
I was.
You were?
Yeah, me, the mayor, and I think it was Steve. Okay, somebody, make me a... Put somebody else on it, I don't care. Put somebody else on it, I don't care.
Do we have to make a resolution or do you...
It will be a resolution.
Resolution?
Yes.
Say again?
Okay, it has to be a resolution.
Yes.
I like you.
I made a resolution, will you appoint, who are we going to appoint?
Councilmember Longo, Kennedy, and Mayor Kimball.
All right, to look for a new judge, interview people for a judge. A judge.
Say that again?
And it has to come back to the council for approval.
It has to come back to the council for approval. Quick call.
Councilmember Causarelli?
Yes.
Kennedy?
Yes.
Longo?
Yes.
Longo?
Yes.
Strumelberg?
Yes.
Mayor Kimball?
Yes.
Mayor, if I could bring one of the things to your attention, the governing body adopted a committee to conduct investigations related to the welfare of the township. Five people were appointed, and I believe one has resigned. Is that correct? Mr. Mattingly indicated that he, on second thought, did not want to serve. So you're going to have to figure out who will appoint.
I'm going to have to...
Take some applications.
Make a motion, adjourn.
You're making a committee for the Silver Lake Firehouse. You're making a committee for the Silver Lake Firehouse.
We already, oh, of course, I wanted to remember that. What I want to ask is, on the minimum of the, with the fire department, the eleven-man thing, how much would that cost?
That's the chief's going to figure out.
I have to get that figured out.
Because what happened was with the Silver Lake fire, because there was no, I guess it was below the minimum, we had the Silver Lake fire engine, did not go to the fire.
That is true.
Okay? And that, that's bad. So I think we should really have a meeting on this, hiring this to the eleven to twelve or whatever they want.
Mr. Mayor, is that a contractual issue? Or is that a more of a procedural?
The minimum is a policy issue.
Policy, okay. So it doesn't require opening contract or anything like that?
No.
We need to understand the financial impact, right?
Yes.
Right, I'm for it. I'm not pre-voting, I'm just saying.
I mean, just for one point, I don't know how much it could cost.
To have one engine not be able to go. Do you have anything to say, please? The only thing I have is, I want to recognize you guys and thank you for the great work you do, especially around this holiday season, these families over the last couple of months that have been so negatively impacted, would be far worse off were it not for guys like you, and for some police officers and service people. So thank you, God bless you, I pray to you all the time, because none of us know when you're going to show up at our house. So I am supportive of the policy change, and I would be supportive of figuring out a way to change something else in order to get this where it belongs, for the good, it can't be good for these guys either to not be able to do that. And the only other thing is, I just would like to wish everybody a Merry Christmas, a Happy Hanukkah, or whatever tradition you observe at this time, and I want everybody to have a happy holiday. Thank you.
Yeah, Kevin, our managing department, our pedal was short. Councilman Atari's not here, but we were both approached by someone asking for our traffic officers to look into a four-way stop at Tiana and Adelaide, because there's a few bad accidents there. So could you look into that? And also, can you get, I don't know, I guess this is from the water department, but which houses had zero water usage in their last quarter, and that might contribute to some of our abandoned properties?
I made that request on my other report.
Okay, thank you.
Just real quick, I want to thank you guys for doing you for our community, especially the firefighters. You know, I think you do a great job, and we'll definitely explore with the chief, you know, what other options we have out there. Merry Christmas, Happy Holidays, Happy New Year, keep it safe, please, all of you. And I just wanted to take a second to recognize Pete Clarizio, who passed away on Thanksgiving. Pete was a board of ed member of Service Community, and for many years you would see him down at Rossmore Farms, he was eighty-two and a great guy, God bless him, pray for his family. Thank you.
Jonathan, I also would like to thank the fire department, but I also would like to thank every other department in the town of Bellevue, Public Works, who work at nights in cold weather, not too bad this year, but fix some water managers' stores, and please keep our natural protectors. Have a Merry Christmas, and I hope you're safe.